First, Planning Commission meeting for the city of Myrtle Beach. I'm going to call the meeting to a quarter and move on to Grove Hall. Sharon, Eric, Joe.
Here.
Austin.
Here.
Danielle.
Here.
Betty Ann.
Here.
Phil.
Here.
Zeb.
Here.
Paul.
Here.
Thank you, everybody, for being in attendance and for refreshing. I'm going to start with the approval of the minutes next up for October 7th, please.
I think the motion we put was written.
Yes, I get it. I have a motion, and I have a call, and a second by me. Sharon, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving on to the presentation of new applications. P25-06, Forest Dunes County.
Yes, ma'am. It's a request from Chris Chocly, Bolton, and Mink to subdivision approximately 1.66 acres off the corner of 63rd Avenue North and North Ocean Boulevard, Zone R10, into three lots ranging in size from 24,297 square feet to 23,671 square feet. This is the property question. The end of 63rd Avenue North on the ocean side of North Ocean Boulevard. And currently, they're requesting subdivision, would see that split into three lots. This is just workshop, that is all I have for you all. Happy to take any questions. And I believe Mr. Chocly is not here today, but Mr. Wooton is pinch hitting instead.
Okay.
Second string.
Okay. Questions for Cameron? Okay. Questions for Mr. Wooton? If they don't ask me anything, you're... Any questions?
Oh, true.
Okay.
Explain the work around with the trees and the lots.
We went ahead and did a tree survey. The client will likely sell these lots to people to build home zones. And they're going to have to be responsible for working around the trees. There'll be, there's nothing planned for construction at this time by our client. We're simply subdividing the property for its eventual sale. They didn't show you all the trees.
Do the re-survey of lot lines generally follow the original lot lines?
Yes. Well, the outside perimeter does.
Sure.
But if you'll recall, this tract was a large lot and a smaller lot, 75-foot lot and a much larger lot. So we've done away with all those property lines and we've evened it out, so all three lots are roughly 95 square feet.
So are we, are we de-restriction? I noticed that that was enclosed, but where are we with that with de-restrictions then? Was this two, was it always two lots? Or was it originally three?
Let's see. To my knowledge, it's been two lots.
I think, I think Mike, it's probably, if you look at the original subdivision survey, it was probably three lots at one time because...
It may have been, but I didn't do the title search, so I don't know.
Yeah. Well, I mean, that is one of the obligations for the applicant is to do a title search and produce any de-restrictions that occur on the property.
There are no, I know Chris has done that. There are no de-restrictions.
That's unlikely.
Yeah, no.
Then we're prohibited this.
That's also unlikely.
Yeah.
Who actually did the, do we know who did the title search, the full title search? Got to go back 100 years to find it.
Don't know, but I'll find out for the next meeting.
I mean, I, you know, we've done other subdivisions of lots in this particular township area, and they've always had de-restrictions.
Zeb, for the, for the new people, newer people, could you expand, or Cameron, expand on de-restrictions? Because it's something that comes up regularly, and everybody doesn't know what that is. So if somebody, Cameron, do you want to do it?
Simply just a research on a piece of property, saying what you can and you can't do with that piece of property. It's important to know that this board does not enforce those. We just have to ask by state law for them if they exist on the piece of property. They're generally rectified in the court system to remove them. But we do not enforce de-restrictions of planning board.
Yeah, the state law, considering subdivisions, the state law requires us to ask if de-restrictions encumber the property. And if they do, do they prohibit the requested action that's being, that's being considered by them?
I'll have that answer for you.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, you know, it's, it may not have showed up in a 60-year search, but it should have showed up in a 100-year search. Almost every lot in Myrtle Beach has de-restricted from subdivision of any further than what the original lot lines were. I think you're going to be fine, because I think the original lot lines for this subdivision are probably along the lines of what you have here. But that's...
But we don't know if it was two lots or three lots, the original. And you do have to do that long search. It's a long search.
And our concern here is obviously what's happened in Surfside and other places where you take a traditional neighborhood with larger lots, and then somebody comes in and subdivides the lots and sells off smaller lots at the detriment of the remainder of the neighborhood.
I understand.
Okay. Any further questions for Mr. Wooton? If not, we'll see you at our next meeting.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
You'll see Chris.
We'll see. Are you sure about that now?
Well, I'm reasonably sure.
We'll see. We'll see.
Madam Chair, I need to recuse myself from the leader of the tribe.
Okay, all right. Because you're related to somebody?
Right.
Okay. Austin has submitted a refusal form. Thank you. Thank you. Goodbye.
Bye.
Goodbye. Nothing personal. All right, on to the next item, ANX-25-03, 29th Avenue Spiritual Center PUD first.
So Kelly's going to be giving the presentation as her first annexations and PUDs, I actually believe. But I wanted to start with this statement. This is multiple pieces that are all directly linked to one another. So she's going to run through this thing pretty systematically and try to get to the end before a lot of the questions come in. But just really want to make it known that the annexations are generally contingent on the PUD being approved as well. So as they go through, just keep in mind that those pieces all kind of have to fit together to get to that final PUD point. So just want to start with that, so.
Thanks, Cam. Okay. Request from Robert S. Guyton, agent, to annex approximately .64 acres off 29th Avenue North and to rezone from Ori County Highway Commercial to the 29th Avenue North Spiritual Center PUD. Here is an aerial view of the proposed annexations. And the current zoning, as well as the proposed annexations. This is the second one. It's a request from Robert S. Guyton, agent, to annex approximately 3,394.77 square feet off 29th Avenue North and to rezone from Ori County Highway Commercial to the 29th Avenue North Spiritual Center PUD. Again, the proposed annexation. The current zoning. And the proposed annexation in relation to that. Here is the 29th Avenue Spiritual PUD. It's a request from Robert S. Guyton, agent, to create a planned unit development between North Oak Street, 29th Avenue North, and 27th Avenue North, known as the 29th Avenue North Spiritual Center PUD. Here's the aerial view of the proposed boundaries of the PUD. The aerial view of that. The zoning that would correlate with the proposed, the previous proposed annexations. And how it would all fit into place within the PUD. The 29th Avenue Spiritual Center PUD is the continued mission of the Habad of Myrtle Beach. And it will consist of a traditional school and worship center, a mikvah, and permanent, independent, and short-term rental onsite residences. The total area will be 64, or I'm sorry, 6.4 acres. And it consists of eight parcels. Three of those are currently undeveloped. And the remaining five include already an existing school, a spiritual center, a former florist, and residential structures. The 8,000-square-foot spiritual center with four apartment floors will act as the PUD's anchor. Some dimensional requirements of the PUD will consist of a minimum lot area of 2,500 square feet with a maximum height of 60 feet for the spiritual center facility, with 42 feet for the remaining structures. A minimum front setback of 20 feet along the perimeter of the PUD, with no minimum front yard setback within the interior of the PUD. And a minimum building separation of 10 feet. Here's a zoning comparison summary between the proposed PUD and the underlying zoning HC1. The HC1 minimum side and rear yard setbacks. And the proposed PUD's parking standards table. Again, all three of these agenda items are contingent upon each other. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. The applicant is also in the room with us.
Okay. Let's, let's just start out with the annexations. Does anybody have any questions about that? The whole of those...
I'm a little unclear as to what, which of these parcels are currently in the city versus the ones that are not.
Okay.
So let's run back here.
So one of the, couple things to get to here. So this right now is our current zoning map. So we have that small donut hole right in the middle. It's currently six pieces of property that are outside city limits. The first annexation, and why we had to run two separate annexations for this, they're owned by separate individuals. So the first annexation was owned by one person, the second is owned by the Habad school right now. When it originally came in, we thought it was just, we noticed how there's some weird cracking in the vectoring of the coloring. We thought that was, that small sliver in the second one was already part of the city, but we found that after the fact that that's actually outside of the city but owned by the Habad.
Really?
Yeah. It's, it's a...
That's so good, that's so good.
To our, to the Ori County records, it looks like an easement property left over from boroughs and shapings. So it was just a weird one that we had to kind of rectify. So the first annexation would be these two blue properties here that are being brought into the city. With the second annexation filling in that small little sliver here. So you would still have a remaining three parcels that are outside the city limits. And it'd be...
You can show them the...
These three here would be remaining outside the city limits.
Okay. And then what about the property they recently purchased? Is that not part of this annexation?
I believe that'd be a good question for the applicant.
It's already in the city. It's already in the city. But it doesn't show it here, does it? Because I thought it backs up to Top Goll.
Yeah.
That would be this large piece here.
Yeah.
That large piece here. That's already in the city, so...
That's in the city. So what's the zoning of that piece?
That one, I believe, is amusement.
Yes.
Okay.
So that, that one piece you just pointed out is in the city, right?
Yes. The only things that are not are the uncolored pieces.
Uncolored.
Oh, boy. So just to...
Uncolored.
Again, at the end of it all, again, if this all fits together, these are the only three remaining pieces that would be outside of city limits, not accounted for in the PUD here on the corner. Everything inside that red boundary would become part of the PUD.
Can you show on this? I think that's a good representation. You can see the donut hole that will exist from, if it's not annexed.
On the uncolored part. I'm not going to leave that alone.
What's the, do we know what the county's adding yet? So they, they didn't help.
Highway Commercial.
Okay. Any more questions on the annexation portion of this? Because I'm excited to get to the PUD part.
It's the first time you've ever said that.
This is the first time. I'm really excited about it. I've been waiting for this for months. Any other questions for Kelly about the annexation portion? For you, Zeb?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
The current florist property, how, is it not conforming to our current highway commercial setback?
Which property?
The florist.
The florist.
On the corner. Flowers by Richard.
I believe, so that's...
They're not in business anymore.
That currently is zoned MUM. I believe they are conforming to the MUM.
And that requires what con... setback?
I don't know that off the top of my head. Charlie said he would be here shortly, yet...
Go ahead.
Not a good thing. He needs to hear that's a good question, correct?
Even if it doesn't comply, it'd be not, I mean, it'd be grandfather not conforming, yeah.
Yeah. I'm asking a question because they're asking for a 20-foot, I'll wait around that rim of 29th and Oak. I'm trying to get a feel for the Oak Street side of it more in particular.
That is the question that you have. I want to try to have that answered by the time the next meeting rolls around and Charlie doesn't get your report.
Okay. Anything else for Kelly? Because I'm going to ask Mr. Guyton to...
Yeah.
Can you answer that? Thank you, Kelly. We'll come back to you.
Thank you.
Which one?
About Phil's question.
Yeah.
No, but did you want, I thought you wanted to hear that answer.
Well, that's Dylan, we're asking for a...
Okay. All right, thank you.
No problem. Um, are we ready for shit, or are we still talking?
Well, we, we are. I thought Phil had a question about the annexation part. But he does not. My misunderstanding, though, yeah. So let's move on to the PUD. Kelly, we're back to you. Any questions, any questions for Kelly about the PUD?
So I have a look, okay, so you've got these different colors here for, for what I think is going to be the PUD. Does that mean that some of the Shabbat property is going to be part of the PUD and some of it's not?
No, this is just an overlay red.
Okay. So, so the, the two lots that are being, the two lots in the easement area that would be an annex are going to be part of the PUD. And then the existing property that the spiritual center already has will become part of the PUD. Will there be any property that the spiritual center has that's not going to become part of the PUD? In the, yeah, do you want to get?
No. All of the red is the PUD. And the, these three. One, two, three are the annexations. So if...
So no.
Oh, you're talking about the odd, just the annexations, the same.
If they're annexed, then don't be part of the PUD.
What's the minimum lot size under MUM?
Don't believe there is one.
There's not. Is there one under Highway Commercial?
10,000 square feet.
It's easier when the encyclopedia is here sitting over there, isn't it?
There's no minimum lot area within the MUM. Highway Commercial 1, Caitlin, is correct, 10,000 square feet.
All right. Let's, let's move on. Anything else that you want to tell us about the PUD now? You ready for more questions?
Just any other questions, anything?
Go ahead with, we have to, we have to test Kelly every minute here. This is quite a package for, to cover. Thank you for doing it.
It's been fun.
So what else do you have for Kelly? Okay. Kelly, you did a good job. If nobody has any questions for you, so I'm going to move to Mr. Guyton. Did you have a tale to tell us?
Yeah, this has been an education process for me. I am obviously not Jewish, and I was not familiar with a lot of the traditions. But I've spent several months now learning this.
So are you regarding?
No, no.
I didn't know where we're going with that.
I have children and a wife that were probably not in favor of that. But I will say, it is fascinating that when you look at their religious requirements, I understand why they want to create an immersive spiritual center. I've always seen them walking up and down on the sidewalk, not realizing that on the Sabbath, they're not allowed to drive. So as their congregation, for lack of a better word, ages, like all the rest of our congregations are aging, the ability to walk to a service is less and less viable. So what their thought was is if we can create one center where they can not only worship, but share their meals and lodging if they so choose. And they're aiming that for both people that live within the city and then some residents that may not be able to get here otherwise. So that's the thought, is that they create one center that feeds them from both a school perspective to a worship perspective to an actual nutrition perspective. So they want to do it all as one center. It's an, it's an optimistic project, I would say. If you look at the scope and scale of that, it's, it's big.
It, it's massive, really.
It really is. And it, and I thought, you know, that this is a one-of-a-kind thing, but I've had calls from all over the country that people who are looking at the same sort of project are looking at this for their community. Even, it started with Charleston. I got some calls from Charleston saying, it may not feel like it, but these guys are actually at the forefront of what we're trying to do as a Jewish community. So I've, I've been over and looked at the Torah. I knew what the Torah was. I did not realize that it was actually 12 gigantic handwritten scrolls.
They're huge.
It's unbelievable. But yeah, you couldn't ask for nicer people than, than, they understand their mission. They get a little caught up in thinking that everybody else is going to be as passionate about their mission as they are, which is probably not the case. But I think they're trying to do the right thing for the right reasons. We spent a lot of time as staff making sure that we were covering all our bases and how to get there. The use thing, you know, we did a lot of time trying to sort out what were excluded uses as much as what were allowed uses. Because a lot of those excluded uses just cloud the picture. They're never going to be a viable option in this PUD, so we chose to separate those and leave them separate from the ones that are allowed. The uses you see here, I don't see those ever changing again. They're, they're obviously considering the fact that they could continue to expand. They had conversations with the Elks Lodge about the piece behind them. That didn't go anywhere. Ultimately, I think they'd love to figure out a way to incorporate some of that. If the other three parcels ever came available, I think it would make sense that they would try to do something with that. The two lots that Kelly was talking about early on, they already leased the home, if y'all remember that. Next door is where the Best Bull Peanuts in town have been for a long time. So I hate to see that go away, but I don't think that'll be part of their menu going forward. So I'd have to find somewhere else to get Bull Peanuts from. It's, it's really simple from their use and what they're doing with it, but it's a complicated project with a lot of moving parts. It's, there's some engineering and architectural challenges to this. Tom Miller's the architect, as record. DRG's the engineer, as record. Worked with both of those guys for a long time. I have a lot of respect for them and a lot of confidence in their ability to figure it out.
Well, I wish the other three parcels, you know, because I believe that this could be absolutely magnificent looking PUD. And it really, it's a sad-looking corner right now as it stands. What happens to the Habad school?
It'll stay, it stays operating. The florist actually becomes what we're calling the commissary in there. So the idea was that would be where they feed the children. But they also have it available so that they have people that are housed onsite. They're not having to wait for the formal meal time. They could come over and grab a snack or sandwiches or drink or those kind of things onsite. So that's what's going on with the florist. I don't think they intend to expand any further the range of opportunities. They're, they're not going to build a college here or anything like that. But the school is something they're very proud of. They think it's what's helped perpetuate their presence here in the community, and I tend to agree with that. So that's something they don't ever want to give up. If you go over there now, it's pretty interesting. The old dance school is functioning as both a worship center and a meal center. So they literally have a meal, roll the tables out of the way, and then worship. It's not an ideal situation. The kitchen is fairly limited, so the number of people that they can serve is fairly limited because of that. So that, it's spent a lot of time.
Mr. Guyton, what is the congregation number?
I, I don't really know. I can have that for you next time.
No, it's just a curiosity, because this is an enormous undertaking.
It is.
Financially. That's not our purview, but that's always a concern, so...
No, I agree. I agree.
This is, I have a multitude of questions, but let's go around the table, if you don't mind.
Sure. Absolutely.
Paul, what question? Okay, Zeb, what do you have, please?
Can you just kind of give us a rundown of why you need the PUD and why existing MUMs, any, doesn't work?
It doesn't work because of what they're trying to do with their similar uses. And you've got both permanent residents and transient residents. So that's, that's their real challenge. And that's why HC1 didn't work alone. So, that's, that's their real challenge, and that's why HC one didn't work alone, HC two didn't work alone, but the two uses together do work.
What is the, for, for residential lots, my recollection is, is you can't have residential lots for less than seventy-five hundred square feet, is that correct?
Depending on the zoning, we have R five that goes on five thousand square feet.
Five thousand square feet. So, I mean, would you need lots that are less than five thousand square feet?
I don't think they will subdivide any lots out of this. The existing lots will stay there because they don't own all of those, particularly the two on the outside. But the plan is that if you're within the project, you would never know that there's a, a boundary line, they can all work together. Even if they choose to sell something along the lines of a condominium unit, it would still be maintained in common, because they don't wanna have to deal with it.
Which one they don't own?
They don't own the two here. That one they lease and that one is, is the one.
So, they're gonna continue to lease and to walk though?
They will improve those properties, they've got a long-term lease on both of those, so they'll still continue to use those within the worship that they're using now. One of those homes functions similar to what we would call a parsonage, so they have their, their rabbis are able to manage it there.
So, so the, the easement area, the leftover easement area and the, um, and the two leased parcels are not gonna become part of the PUD?
No, they are becoming part of the PUD, but they won't be recombined into one parcel, as they said.
So, those owners are considering to the PUD?
Yeah. Um, Habad actually owns a small parcel, Selby Trust owns the other two. Um, I think you'll remember when they bought Pershing Chatham lot, they took it in a different entity.
Yeah.
That is supposed to be a subsidiary of the Habad. Some paperwork wasn't done and corrected, it's being corrected now to make sure that that's reflecting what that actually is.
Part of the twenty-five hundred square foot things is to account for that small easement parcel from leftover B and C, that's about thirty-three hundred square feet, so. Just trying to give wiggle room on that one to make sure that that parcel can stay as is without having to be forced into combination with anything else.
What's the reason for you not to provide that with one of the other parcels?
When they're done with their design, they may very well do that, but today, what they're telling us is that they don't intend to combine anything. They'll leave the lot on its way. And I think some of that'll have to do with financing too, this is gonna get financed in tranches, for lack of a better word. That largest building is probably the most difficult to finance out of all of them. The others, I've seen the financing commitments from traditional banks, I think those are all manageable. That large building is gonna take, maybe not a miracle, but it's gonna take a lot of prayer to get, to get that up.
Well, I think they can do that.
I agree, I agree.
Anything else, Zeb, I gotta move on. We'll come, we'll come back, we'll come back to you, okay. Joe, are you ready to ask some questions?
Yeah, so, you mentioned earlier something about how, like, other places in the country are looking at the spiritual center. So, nothing like this already exists in the country?
They don't have one that's what they call immersive, so you're there for everything. You come to worship, you come to stay, you come to share your meals, you come to study, all those things.
There are, there are other spiritual centers that aren't Jewish spiritual, I mean, we have one, not part of us, so. Yeah, that's a good question. Anything else, Joe?
Not at the moment.
Okay, Jared, and nothing yet. Okay, Danielle?
Uh, I have nothing yet, but I have some questions to make.
Okay, Betty Ann?
Well, I was just curious about the larger building you're talking about. It looks like there are about two-hundred-and-fifty units to be built.
Total.
How in the world do I fit that in, three stories?
Well, and that, that building has a sixty-foot height limit, and the massing exhibit that's in here is not very good. Tom is revising that, so before we come back to, what I wanted to see was both the street scape and an overhead, so you could get some context. That massing exhibit they gave us doesn't really give you any context, but I've been assured that that will be available before next week, so you can see that.
Well, I would assume, being a spiritual center, they would be small rooms and simple rooms, 'cause that's what they should be, but, um, you know, I was just curious about that, thank you.
Yeah, my assumption is that they're gonna function more like dormitories than maybe as, uh, single-family permanent residents, so. But they will share common areas, they won't need meal preparation, all those things.
And do we allow dormitories anywhere else in the city?
J one stupid.
Yeah, there's that PUD, and then, I believe we do in the, um, oh, the old, the old hospital site, um, what was that zone?
The old hospital site up, up on?
That's now Papillon, whatever that zone designation was at the time when it was the hospital, I believe we allow dormitories in that.
We did?
I believe so.
Oh, I don't remember that.
I'm surprised about that.
It's a hospital.
Yes, doing my best.
You're doing a great job.
So, since though, um, if everything is approved, what would be like the starting point, when they'll be able to just like start anything?
Well, when I say start, some of the uses already exist.
Okay.
The Habad's there, the school's there, they're already converting the old flower shop as their commissary, so. The next, probably the next piece would be the, um, the individual residences that you see in there, that are kinda more like townhomes. That would probably be the next piece that would come. I expect the larger building to be the last piece.
Hey, Phil, Phil, I know you have a question, I just wanna, before you start though, Phil, 'cause I have a lot of questions. I, I, I wanted to commend you on the section one, the summary of the, this PUD here. I thought that was really well done, and, uh, I, I just liked what, how you presented it. It felt totally different than all other PUDs that you, uh, pitched.
Well, I'll have to give them credit, I got a lot of editing help from them, it was not solely my interpretation, but that's.
Well, maybe you need to have another partner there. I mean, it real, no, it was.
Well, here's what I would say, is, anytime I do work for churches, regardless of what denomination they are, it's free. So, I like to think of these as divine intervention, it's better because I'm here for the right reasons.
And evidently, you're getting schooled. So, you're getting, you're getting some dues paid there, okay. Phil, I know you, you have a whole page, but I have.
I'm not doing all of it right now, I just got four.
Okay, okay, you, you go so that I.
I'm not gonna do it.
You go, yes, you go, so, because then, what you don't ask, I have a list of.
Okay, um, the public improvements, two-hundred thousand. On your experience, um, with the bike foot sidewalks and the bike landscaping that's being conceptually presented, apparently you feel that two-hundred thousand will cover all of it? I think it's a little low, only because that mid-block signal line crossing, it's probably gonna run around a hundred and thirty-five to a hundred and fifty by itself. So, that, I expect by the time we're done with council, that number will increase. Okay, so, when, by the time we get to the final, we'll have the fourth accurate number, then, okay. And I do wanna commend you, by the way, too, this is a wonderful opportunity here, and they're trying their best to improve the area. And that's good. And they, and Joyce was right, they have some challenges, that corner in particular looks like an old band aid compared to anything else there. Now, where are you planning to put in those residential housing, that kinda, I guess, a, almost a L-shaped block? I can understand the request for the twenty feet, the particular way it's being designed is that it's not like a flat running along Oak Street, it's more just a corner, it's gonna hit that twenty, and the rest really is gonna be graduating away from that. Is the, is the way the PUD's designed, um, would it require, if you change that type of concept, that it would require to come back? The perimeter, um, boundary changed, did the buffer on it? Yes, it would have to come back, as Cameron can answer this, but I would assume as a major member, if you change that exterior buffer, that's typically. Well, if Zeb decided to put something straight, parallel to the street, twenty feet away, that would require, is that a change, that would require to come back?
I believe so, by, section nineteen, that would be.
Can we find out for sure for the next time, for Zeb? And that was one of the challenges with the massing exits, because when Tom drew it, he drew it with a ten-foot set back, and because it is internal and immersive, we felt like it was important to keep a twenty-foot perimeter so you can control that. Both until the surrounds improve, so they can control what's on the interior and from a visual standpoint, because that gives them enough room. I use the boundary with the top off as a good example. Staff had some early info that was valuable, is that you got those lights and you got that intrusion there, you really need to do a layer, as much as you can, opaque buffer on that boundary to protect the integrity, what you're trying to do within the PUD. So, I see that as probably the biggest challenge of all, is figuring out how to buffer that effectively. And that's one of the elements.
Lot of layers.
By, by next week, DRG will have a focal plan and a street perspective of a section of that buffer, so you'll be able to do that. That's good, so I suppose I'll ask you to get that, so. So, why do you need it on the pinky lots, which has got the, um, housing and is owned by someone else, and the florist, why does those need to be? And along with the Habad center now on Oak Street, why does those need to be twenty feet? Well, just the perimeter buffer for the whole PUD is twenty feet, so wherever that boundary was, as an example, if they did acquire those three parcels later and amended the PUD to include those, then twenty feet would then move out to twenty-nine Patamun instead of being internal.
And then internally, there'd be ten-foot separation between?
The structures will have to have a ten-foot separation. But you are wanting the PUD to currently change from thirty to twenty on Oak Street. Still trying to figure out what, what's the need for that. There's more buffer with thirty feet than there is twenty feet. I, I don't think you have thirty feet there today, you have barely enough for a parking space. Right, and that's what I'm thinking, so, kinda if you could figure it out without, that'd help us explain it to somebody, and after that's a question of why, it's, it helps with understanding that. What I expect to happen is, those parking spaces in front of the old floors may ultimately go away and the parking will be internal, I don't think you'll manage.
That would be great, it's dangerous now.
Well, for two reasons, 'cause you have those kids from the school walking over, so you don't want them interacting with vehicles, if you can help it. When, when I look at their summary review of what this PUD's supposed to be, I see nothing commercial oriented, so why is the, we retaining permitted commercial uses HC one and HC two? Because we have to look at this, they could fail at this, or it never gets completed like it is, anyone else can come in, go to twenty-foot all the way around, change back, we'll go back. And. I'm, I'm not comprehending why they need all these type brokers, confectionists, dressmakers, eyeglass sales, florists, why are we retaining this commercial? Only for what you said, is as the project evolves over time, whether that's five years, or ten years, or whatever it is, these outside parcels, if they acquire them, they maintain a commercial use. But we thought it was more important to exclude uses that weren't ever realistic for this property, and only include the uses that were viable within the property. I will point out that as you've seen in most of the PUDs in the last four, five years, it has a sunset clause with a reversion in there. So, if it does not gain traction, it will not remain the PUD, it will revert back to straight zoning, and of course, any future development will have the required requirements for that underlying zone. A question, I guess, could be staff in here, a restaurant across the street from the elementary school, and this is the school too, if somebody decided to build a restaurant there and have a bar in it, would that be legal? Bars are excluded, yes, already. I know, I know a bar, I wanna make sure said bar and, uh, you know, the unpermitted uses of bars and, that's what you call taverns. So, a restaurant that had a bar inside of it would not be allowed, it'd have to be more of a.
That'd be a state issue.
Yeah.
I mean, zoning wise.
I know, I'm making sure that, because it's got restaurants included.
But a state issue, yeah.
And some restaurants have bars in them.
Correct.
Most of them do.
I mean, even hotels have bars, so. The big thing is, there's regulations that state you cannot sell alcohol within a certain.
Not through a street.
I understand, that's why I make sure, for they got restaurant in as a permitted uses, I wanna make sure.
That is a long, that's a long step.
Keep that one happening.
That front door to that property, the front door of the school to the.
If it is a travel path.
Yeah.
Is there a way that we could see, they're converting the old flower shop, and you know that's not real pretty on Oak Street. Is there a way that we can include, incorporate in there, some way they're gonna improve that?
Actually are, we are working with them on that, they are improving, it's more of an inside-out option right now, yes.
Well, I'm talking about outside option.
What's coming?
Yeah, and there, and I think you know this, the reason I don't include those in the PUD is 'cause it still has to go to CAB, and I don't wanna have to amend the PUD, because CAB has a difference of opinion on what the aesthetics are. So, when you see a PUD from me, you'll only see a boxing, massing exhibit, you won't see architectural details. I didn't say architectural, but you do have in phases what's gonna be done, and you got in phase one to maintain what we have. What I'm saying, can we say, and, and prove the exterior look of the property, CAB, in terms of what that is applicable, but not to allow it to stay as is?
'Cause it's a mess, is what you're saying.
Yeah, I mean, I understand the principle, but I don't, I don't know how we get there from here, because they're working on the drawings for the renovations to the flower shop as we speak, which will be approved by CAB. So, I think it's safe to say that other than the existing structures, the entire PUD gets improved. But I don't know how you quantify that in the PUD to make it binding today, but you wanna know what the improvements to the flower shop are gonna be. I don't need to know the purpose, to know that it will enhance the exterior where it's feeling. Yeah, yeah, I, I don't think there's any question about that, they don't want a flower shop beside, next to the school that they're using for a commissary. The last thing I have to finish from that now is, um, a lot of need for ten years and a five-year extension. It sounds like this. There's a need, and I agree with the need, why possibly? Mainly because that largest building that we've been talking about, that is the challenge in that. If you started today, you'd be three years into design and permitting that building, so five years just. Which building are you talking about? The, the spiritual center, the largest building in the. The one that's going on, the personal. That's why. I mean, otherwise, if it were a typical multifamily or even a commercial PUD, those are, are done on the front end, they're either gonna approve them or they're not. This is a little bit different as everything's evolving, as they progress with each step of it. Kinda like they've done, up until now, the school was built, uh, forty years ago, so it's taken them this long to get this much traction to where they're going. I'm not willing to say that in five years, they can complete this, I don't think that's a realistic.
That's why I was curious about the congregation size, 'cause this is a financial wallet.
It is, it is.
I mean, what, what prevents the PUD being passed and then the organization deciding to sell off, um, a portion of it for the use, that would include these permitted uses that don't really, I mean, I think. One of the reasons for considering all this, is 'cause this is very outside of the normal, um, uses permitted by, by the current zoning scheme inside the city. You know, small lot sizes, dormitories, um, you know, various other things, which I think are fine as part of a accessory to a, um, religious campus. But my concern would be, if it's not used as a religious campus at some point in the future, does this undermine the whole zoning scheme, um, inside, you know, the area that we're, that we're looking at? I mean, I, I worry about tiny houses, you know, that's one of the things we've been trying to avoid, is tiny houses, and some of those are tiny houses. You know, the, those kinda things, that it's, it all makes sense, it was part of a greater spiritual center, but if this was gonna be cut up at some point in the future, maybe not even voluntarily, um, I don't know if this zoning is what we would want, stay in place.
I think, I wanna jump here real quick, I think, since we enforce off text, one of the simplest answers is the summary of the PUD specifically spells out what this.
That was kind of my question, so.
So, if someone does come in and tries to buy up this property and do, you know, tiny homes, well, I have here in writing and enforceable that they're also gonna be building a mikvah and a religious traditional school and worship center, so. There's the teeth to the PUD that says what this will be.
Okay.
So, including the.
It's, it's, yeah.
So, we're, we're fairly confident in that the text in the PUD. So we're, we're fairly confident in that the text in the PUD looks at this as all one, one, one general permitted use.
That's how I read it.
With, with all these separate.
It, it cannot be separated.
Right.
Is there a way to tie these permitted uses to those lots that need the permitted uses, which is those two? The only thing, ones I see as commercial is included in the pinky section.
No, because as an example, the large spiritual center, probably going to have some sort of concession operation in there. Probably going to have some sort of store that'll be within there.
You can't do accessory, you're not supposed to do accessory uses in PUDs.
That's why we eliminated both the special exceptions and the conditional uses in there. If you look at it, it's just the straight uses. You don't include either of those.
After the total bill out, you have up to forty, fifty-three buildings, I think. And the, I mean, what kind of buildings are you visiting there that would be fifty-three buildings on the property?
Some of them are detached, but the majority of the density comes from that one large building. If you take that building away, then the density drops dramatically. It has to do with different types of construction.
So we're really doing fifty-three buildings, really?
Yeah, that, that was really one of my very pointed questions. Fifty-six separate buildings. I mean, what are they identified as? That's an enormous amount of.
Yeah, that would include all the existing buildings plus the residences that are ground level, for lack of a better word, not including the larger building.
But, but they're fifty-six separate buildings. To me, that means each one has four walls.
Not necessarily. It might be a shared wall.
Okay.
These could be built.
Maybe, maybe we need to couch this sentence differently then, because that reads to me fifty-six separate buildings.
Okay. So if they're units, you, you want them treated as one aggregate building.
Kind of like a condo.
I mean, that's what gets, gets me worried about tiny houses again and tiny buildings.
Could be seven buildings, but it would be one building by that.
Yeah, I mean condos, I'm not concerned about condos, you know, we have.
Right.
You know, but, I mean, that's what makes the twenty-five hundred square feet lot size, you know, a concern. Particularly if it's not needed. If, if, if we don't need, I mean, we've got a grandfather lot that was kind of a leftover lot anyway, but if we don't need twenty-five hundred square feet, I'd like to at least maintain five thousand square feet.
Well, I think we'll have to include that existing lot. So the most you can go is thirty-two hundred square feet and provide for the existing lot.
Unless the existing lot's not conforming, right?
If it's not non-conforming when you put it in the PUD, you change in the zone.
It becomes what it is, yeah. Okay. Phil, are you finished with all of your questions? Okay, Phil, I'm going to just go down a little, a few questions for myself. The two hundred thousand dollars is based on the value of the PUD projection, correct?
It's yet to be seen what council will agree to on that. And I will tell you that the mid-block, single lot crossing was something that we didn't think was going to be a possibility. Thanks to a workshop in this room, senior staff said, we can support that. So that, that was not in the earlier drafts. It did come into the submittal draft for that very reason. Because they think it's important both for kids leaving the existing Ori County schools and here going across the street, or worshippers coming across the street as well. And that, like Phil asked earlier, I think that one item is going to run somewhere between a hundred and thirty-five and a hundred and fifty thousand. We just put one in a dead web.
But the overall value of the PUD is based on the value of the public improvement. So if that, if that item, you know, that's, we're a long way from sidewalks and everything else that you mentioned.
That's why I think that number will go up by the time council.
Okay. The, the public benefits be limited to the improvements to be made to the public assets. Include stormwater, roadways, and public safety assets. So because this is, this is a different PUD, not open to the public. Is that correct?
That's right.
It's not open to the public, so it has a little different. Another question is, what about the visitor store? Is that visitor, does that mean somebody?
Within the property.
Within, okay.
Yeah.
I, you, you have addressed all the parking standards. I'm not sure about all of them, but one that I think is omitted is, this is an enormous property. It's going to have a lot of staff. Where is staff parking?
That, I, I don't know that they've addressed the number of staff that won't be living on site. So that was the other part of that. Their worshippers, as an example, won't be driving to worship. They'll be walking or staying on site. So that's why traditional parking standards really don't work for this PUD. It's a completely different animal.
But there is going to be staff nonetheless, right? I mean, there are going to be housekeepers and.
Well, what's yet to be seen is are those staff of the same religious orientation as the people running it?
So they're going to walk.
They're not going to have housekeepers drive in.
But they're only walking one day a week, so.
Yeah, they're not going to have housekeepers drive in during Sabbath to service the units while the worshippers walk in.
Okay, it's just a concern for me, but. We, we, there's a lot of redundancy in this as a flip through, but my, my biggest concern was the fifty-six separate buildings. If you can address that and couch that in a different format, I would appreciate that. Because that, it, it's kind of elusive to what the, the phase five, and I mean, this is many years away, but, you know, I, I'm cheerleading for this because I think this would be a great benefit to the community, a great benefit to the Jewish community, a wonderful change to that, that really sad corner that we have there. And I, I know that the CAV will do a great job on making this look fabulous because it doesn't not only need to be functional for you, it needs to look beautiful and welcoming to everybody too.
And it needs to be somewhat timeless for what they're doing.
Yes.
It doesn't need to be something that five years from now is going to look outdated.
I, I do, I really do hope it's done in ten, ten years. I really would hope.
I'd like to see it done. I'm not sure I got many more than that. So I'm with it.
Actuarially speaking, as they say. So I, I mean, I, I am rooting for this. I, I just see good things. It's a good, it's good. You've done a good job on this. I would like to see, and I've already talked to Cameron about this, some of our exhibits are pretty minute. Can anyone read them? I mean, they're, they're not, they're not much.
We'll provide eleven by seventeen.
Yeah, get that to, because that, that's a normal PUD presentation is eleven seventeen. I sure would like to see, see that a little better. And you'll have probably more information when you come back anyway. And I, I even think that the tree, that you're going to have trees, there's probably really no trees on the property. Are there any trees?
There's some, but they're not great trees. And again, going back to the conversation with staff about that buffer between top con, there's really nothing that would be sufficient to do that. Because if they're canopy trees, they don't provide any coverage for below. So that layered buffer is very important on that.
Yeah, you're, you're going to have to do a lot of layering for the top backing up to top. I mean, I, I'm not sure how you do it, but you know, we have a lot of brilliant landscape people and they can get it done. Because it needs to be an enclave, so it needs to be private and spiritual and quiet and, you know, not have a golf ball flying over, you know. I don't know how far those golf balls go, but you, you probably know that better than me.
Or the people yelling, go, take it as far as.
Oh, well, there's that too.
Shep, I know you've got a twenty foot setback along the perimeter of the PUD. Would, would the applicant be willing to, if they decide at some point in the future ever to build walls and fences along the perimeter, that they at least set those walls and fences by five feet so you've got some landscaping between the sidewalk and the perimeter fence?
Yeah, that's not a question. No, that's not a question. I, I don't think they plan to put a fence now, but I understand why that could be a possibility and it might in the future, particularly if they acquire those three lots, it might make more sense to close.
Yeah, and I, I understand that that could happen, but I just don't, you know, we've got those situations where you've got a wall right up and it's, you know.
Sure. Yeah, that's not a problem at all.
If I can get the calculation right, the worship conference in back of the facility is about eight thousand square feet. So that's sixteen spaces for that total free space facility.
And half of that is support, so it's not assembly, so about four thousand is the assembly portion of that.
Right, four thousand, seven, four thousand.
Yeah.
Right split. Yeah, worship, four thousand, seven. I know on Sunday they don't walk, but going back to the same thing, they're going to do things other than on their Sabbath. Their Sabbath.
Or a mid-sabbath.
I'm still trying. I know it's an issue with what you're thinking, you know what I'm trying to say? Sixteen spaces for that large facility they're going to have. It's not going to be just for residents.
Right.
I'm having a hard time wrapping around how that's going to be even the right thing for them.
You know, the original proposal, and I think staff will tell you, was, was a lot less than that. Then what you have is, is based on a change from staff.
How, how does, how does staff wrap around with all our other regulations, with all our other requirements? We do see an overkill in especially big box stores with so many parking requirements and everything else, but we need parking in other places. But how, how do we wrap around allowing that with such a large facility and usages?
I mean, I think you raise a good point, Phil, in that I'm not as concerned about, you know, it's, it's kind of their choice given the nature. This is not, it's actually going to be open to the, I mean, the public. I don't, I mean, you know, so, so it's kind of their own, they'll make their own arrangements for their own cars. What does worry me is we've got, you know, city rights of way and the neighborhoods all around there. And if they don't have sufficient parking, are they going to be parking in these city rights of way in front of people's houses and all that kind of stuff, that, you know, on a semi, you know, you know, constant nature? How, how do we, how do we address that in a way that, that works?
I'll, I'll go back to at least from best practices in planning. We're seeing more cities moving towards models decreasing the amount of parking. About twenty-five percent of American surface areas are parking lots at this point. So best planning practices, it's kind of letting the market decide what they need. I don't think they're going to put themselves in a position where they underpark themselves for this very nature. I think in discussions with the applicants as well, their intention with the people who are staying there on site are the ones primarily using the site. So you already have parking built in additionally with all the housing that's going on the site as well. So I, I, as a staff member, I feel comfortable with the parking that's under private.
And then here, what Cam said, if you look at the units that they're portraying, all those units actually have parking associated with those units.
Right, quite.
Each one of them, excuse me. Is there, I mean, is there a way to, as part of this PUD, have no on-street parking, you know, in the area? Or at least along the, those people's houses that, that on the other side of Oak Street there? I mean, I, I just, you know, it's, it's, it's a problem that the city has addressed before in the form of, you know, beach access and all that kind of stuff. You get a city permit because you live in the city, you know, you can park in these rights of way. And these people who live there will be residents of the city. So I, I just don't want there to be underparked only to burden the neighbors with on-street parking or.
Well, I think the resident parking is sufficient within the PUD. It really just comes down to guests. And I, I think we had this conversation early on, this is not intended to be a mini Broadway at the beach with a menorah. It really is just a worship center. And that's what it's for. It's not, they're not trying to attract the general public.
But just, I think between Phil and Sam and my thoughts about parking, we don't need to have overflow parking on the street or in adjoining neighborhood. That's, that's a, that's, it's a, it's a reality thing. I mean, it, it's that simple. So, I mean, we don't want to overpark any, we don't because that's awful, but we don't.
I tell you what might help. Before next week, we'll put together a total parking. Because I think what's misleading is when you look at the parking chart, it's breaking it out by unit. So you're not seeing what.
It's hard to see.
That would be wonderful. That would be very, that would be very helpful.
Sure.
Okay, commissioners, what other questions do you have for Mr. Guyton? So I think you know what we need, what we're looking for, and if anybody has any last.
One quick question I have for staff.
Yes, Phil.
And the phase five, that's where you're going to build the amenities and accessory uses. What, what are the ambitions out there?
Well, and keep in mind that any of the phases can be built in any order.
Right.
So that's just for an organizational standpoint. But as an example, if they put in residences where they have people permanently there, they think they'll have plunge pool. They'll have some sort of outside activity because part of what they don't want is people that are, they don't want us to feel like a restaurant. They want these people to still have an active lifestyle.
So there are three activities, the active lifestyle.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
See you next time. Will you be, will you be ready with everything with our next meeting?
Yeah. Give me a good excuse to tell DRG, I know where they got to be.
They better get, they better get ready.
I have some minor revisions to my narrative, but I think I'm going to just say it compared to them.
Thank you for your, being a volunteer, helping.
Oh, absolutely. I told these guys I did one for a church that started out that I was going to negotiate a contract for construction. And the next thing I knew, I was closing a twelve million dollar construction hole. I wasn't what I'm marketing for, but as him knows, that's part of, you take it where it is.
You're finished, you'll take a bow.
They're not finished with you yet.
Yeah, yeah. Well, another friend of mine who is also Jewish had a saying about that. He said, be careful now. When you give us one thing, we're going to ask for two.
Thank you. See you next time.
I appreciate it.
I have a question for the staff. I'd best educate me. For a spiritual center such as this, and we're going to build a dormitory and single residence, what guidelines do we use for, if there be such a thing?
We've never done one before.
I've never, I don't know what the.
Yeah, this, this has been an odd one, why it's taken quite a few months to get to the table because this is, as Shep noted, one of the first of its kind in the country. What we looked at with this one is the, the folks who are involved in this were very, very clear from the outset that this is something for the participants of their faith. So that's where we, my large concern coming into this initially was that this was just going to be a short-term rental facility. But when it came in with that large narrative speaking specifically to what they wanted for their community, that kind of alleviated my concerns that this isn't going to be just a short-term rental with a cloak over it. So when it comes down to the housing, it's kind of like the statement I made with parking. We're trying to move to more of a model where the market decides what it needs. And, and when they presented us with this, where they wanted to do more of a townhome style with some detached single family, we felt comfortable with that. So.
I guess my, my other question is, as you gave me, what, is it our responsibility to question the developer and the builder on a number of parking spaces? Is this something that the CAV, the CAV's involved with, or is this something that we say, you've got to have so much?
So I would, I would start by saying the words on the paper are the purview of the planning commission to come to the table with and work through with the applicant before it goes to city council. I mean, the city council is ultimately the backstop and decider of all of this. But parking is very much on the table for you as a board to discuss with the applicant. Because of this, at the end of the day, it is an opinion of the board to present to them that they don't have enough parking, if that's how y'all feel. But it is well within your purview, essentially, any words in that document there. So CAV largely won't get involved with parking that is baked into the code itself.
It's up to, I mean, it's up to their opinion. It's rare.
I mean, parking really is kind of more our, our, our purview here. And, and you know, where we've eliminated parking requirements in like the downtown areas and all that kind of stuff, that has not concerned me because to the extent we do have on-street parking, it, it goes with a commercial application anyway. Here, if there is. Here, if there is on-street parking, you know, because of insufficient parking at the facility, it's going to be spilling over into people's front yards. And that's, you know, that's a problem. That's not what we see, you know, where we're underparking in other areas, it's not so much of a problem. I mean, you're right, I mean, they're, then define their parking spaces, you know, and pay for them, you know, if they're on the city lot or another person's private lot. But here, because it backs up to a neighborhood, a residential neighborhood, it's going to spill over into free parking area in front of people's houses. And that's, that's the biggest concern I have over this whole project here.
And I think the concentration of logging, that has to do with Shabbat. So, and that is only one. So six days a week, anybody can drive anywhere, basically. I mean, I don't, but, so let's not.
Holidays are also Shabbat for Jewish culture.
So that, I'm just saying, that's when they can't drive. So there is, everybody has car.
So one of the earlier discussions we had had was seeing if they could work with the Oaks Lodge that's behind them to do kind of a hybrid leasing situation or to provide some overflow parking. I don't know if that conversation is shaking out in any direction. It didn't seem like it had. It is something that we can discuss with the applicant before they bring this back in, before y'all at the next meeting.
Is there a way to prohibit on-street parking as part of the PUD?
Not to my knowledge, because that becomes a police issue since it's in the right-of-way. So it would just be, you know, neighborhood residents calling the police officers that there's a car illegally parked in the right-of-way in front of their house.
Isn't it legally parked there if it's not a parking space?
Depends on what street you're on. There's some streets in town where you can park, but we can't.
It's all under the right-of-way width, isn't it?
Well, I mean, to me, my perception is, is you can park in any city right-of-way unless there's a no parking sign there.
You can't park in Ash Boulevard either.
You can't park on my street unless you have a sticker.
Well, you've got. Well, I know, but you have a sticker. But, I mean, anybody that's going to be visiting this facility that is a city resident will have a sticker.
So I think the simplest answer for this one would be, we'll put this to the applicant before they come in next time. This is not under a time crunch, kind of like a subdivision would be where state law has mandated, you have to either approve or deny in a certain amount of time. So if the applicant brings in that total parking count and you are still uncomfortable with it, it's the purview of the board to continue it at least one time, so that way they can work towards a more amicable parking solution for you.
You know, I have the same concern, I think, as they have everybody about parking. I just want to make sure, I understand our purview, the same as, we've all talked about landscaping, Ziv about a wall around the facility, lighting, street lighting, on-property lighting, it's all in here. If this isn't with our purview, I would rather see a more inclusive plan of all of that, that's just.
I think, I think it's going to be that now to us. Because we do have concerns, you're on the right track.
I'm with, totally agree.
I might take a peek at existing conditions of the properties. I know appearance-wise, we've had questions, but look at parking-wise and what's currently going on there. I might drive by, it's really not, the existing sites are not parked that highly, they're pretty low.
The only time you see like traffic in a school.
Pickup traffic, yes. That's in any school.
Pickup traffic, but, and then, and then when the floor is backing out into.
Well, that's closed now.
No, I know that, but I recognize that, but I'm glad he said that they were going to take out that parking back. I mean, because talk about pickup traffic and pulling out into that street. It wasn't a good, it wasn't a good scenario at all. So I'm glad he said he was going to take that away.
I just want to reiterate, the document in and of itself is the purview of this board.
Okay.
And I'm gonna talk out of both sides of my mouth here real quick, though. It's the purview of this board, but city council is the final decision maybe on it. So it's up to y'all to decide what extent of something you want to ask from an applicant, knowing that at the end of the day, they can just request that you deny it and move it on to city council. So I think it's fair.
And pretty pictures don't count. It's the text. That's what counts to us. So don't, unlike C A B, you were looking at.
Right, and the wrong ones on the C A B, I mean, they brought inclusive plans that showed signage and landscape. I mean, it was really in-depth. And if it's with our purview, I'd rather see it here, so it makes the job for the C A B maybe a little bit easier.
Actually, it doesn't, because, you know, a building could change, building codes could change, layouts, and then they got to come back to this whole process and that. So that's why typically you guys are just in a box, and then we let the design elements occur with the camera.
Anytime that it gets put into the PUD, to Charlie's point, Shep brought up the financing of that large building. If they show you the elevations.
...in for the next meeting. Could we get that delivered to us rather than get it at the moment that we come in so that we can have time to say it?
Sure.
Is everybody finished with that now? I'd like to move on to the, what's coming down the road, anything?
Nothing as of right now, it's from mid-cycle, so the next deadline is November seventh, I believe it is. There's a couple things that have text amended floating out and about. I haven't heard of any other PUDs really at this point coming out at all, so. I do have to say, though, Taisha did get the beach manager plan back into the state, so we're waiting for a final step of approval and a note from the state that we're good to pursue with that one. And we're working pretty hard on the, oh, this is a big one. So the comprehensive plan update that we've been working on with the population element, working up a white paper to start with, which is just a lot of the text that will be encompassed in the document. Wanted to get that to y'all for your analysis review, make sure y'all are comfortable with that before we go ahead and do all like the graphic design work and making it pretty. So I just wanted to start with just the simple raw data and information that we can have pushed to you. So I'm hoping to have that to you for the next meeting.
Okay, good. Anything else from staff? Nice job, Kelly.
Thank you.
That's a lot, too. You did a good job. Taisha, Taisha did a good job. She kept everything under control.
Do appreciate that.
She did.
Well, she tried to.
And she's very quiet when she does almost everything. And Caitlin, the backbone for all of us, she keeps everything glued together. Thank you. Communications from the planning commission, anybody have anything? Boy, everything is perfect in Myrtle Beach. I love to hear that. Okay, then.
You in for a drink?
Yes.
Second.
Motion to adjourn from Ziv and a second from Paul, all in favor?
So you're in charge of putting this together?
The presentation, just presenting it.
Okay, who puts together this?
Oh, this time I did.
Okay, I was just curious. Are you also the deliverer?
Yes, I deliver it as well. I had a busy Friday.